I will call this meeting to order, and I thank you all for being here as we try to wage war on the video front here. I thank you for your patience on Wednesday, and hopefully we managed to take care of a few bugs, and now we only have five articles to go through. We should be able to get through them before midnight. So, uh... But I, um... Housekeeping motion, the moderator would entertain a motion that should we not finish our business? We will reconvene on Wednesday at 7:30 here in the auditorium. All those in favor, those on virtually, if you could raise your virtual hands. Now you can test to make sure your hand works. Okay, hands down. The motion passes. Thank you. Let's move right on to Article 14. Article 14 is to amend the zoning map and rezone property to general business district. The motion is moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee and is as presented in the warrant. Ms. Kastner, you have something to tell us on this one?
Thank you, I do. I'll let Brady get to the slide. Actually, first to start off, I want to introduce all of you. You can't see him, but our new assistant planner, Brady Caldwell, he started in February, and then everything got crazy, so he's been doing a great job, and he is the visuals for us during town meetings, so. Hopefully eventually you guys will all meet him, he's been great. Moving on, Article 14, 207 Cambridge Street rezoning from IG to, which is General Industrial to the General Business District, the proponents or the planning board. You may recall 207 Cambridge Street is the Burlington Auto Supply. The building goes very far back into the site. If you go to next slide. The site right now, the front of the site is in the General Business District, similar to much of the town center underlying zoning district. The back of the site is in the General Industrial District. The entirety of the site and much of the town center is, has an overlay district, which is a central business district within the town center. That remains unchanged as part of this proposal. Next slide. So, why are we looking to rezone from IG to BG? So, we're looking to take that whole parcel into the general business underlying district to remove the existing General Industrial zoning district in the rear, which has allowed historically for industrial uses such as wholesale trade, warehousing, and manufacturing. The site itself, being under the town center overlay, has opened up many opportunities within this site, such as the existing Indian Restaurant and the grocer, and as well as the karate studio that's in the back of the site. As mentioned before, the overlay remains unchanged by this proposal. This rezoning to general business will ensure that any reuse of the site and the building will be closely related to the retail and consumer uses, which we are encouraging in the town center and not some of the industrial uses of the past. And that is my presentation. Thank you.
So, Planning Board's supported this 700, and Land Use Committee also supported this 700. Are there any comments or questions on this article? Yes, sir, is Mr. Bell at the back?
Yes, Brad.
If you could please come up and use the microphone?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Roger Bell, Precinct 6. Are there currently any particular uses that are, have been proposed for this area with the change in zoning? Has somebody come forward to do something with the building?
So, thank you for your question. Not yet. We have, as I mentioned before, it was the Burlington Auto Parts. The front of their site was a retail site. They did a lot of warehousing and wholesale trade in the back of the site. There was concern by the planning board that a use that may be similar to that, or even, you know, more, or even an independent wholesaler warehouse business could occupy some of the tenant spaces in the rear of the site, because right now, since Auto Supply did leave the site, there's three tenant spaces open. And what the planning board and staff are really looking to do is ensure that we were encouraging the direction of the town center being retail, hospitality, food, and more of those uses that people can walk around and experience, similar to most of the underlying zoning district in general business, as well as the overlay. There was a chance that you could use the overlay, and we could get those businesses, but there's also, because you can still use the underlying zoning district, there was also a chance that we would continue some of those uses that we didn't want necessarily to promote in that building.
If I might redirect. Would that also exclude certain things from coming into that building as well?
That would exclude uses that are only allowed in that General Industrial District, such as what I mentioned, wholesale trade, manufacturing, warehousing. I could go on, but more of those type of uses that you, you know, would see not in kind of a front storefront, walkable neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
And I also wanted to just remind the moderator to read the votes.
That what?
To read the votes of the boards and committees.
You already did.
Oh, you did? Oh, I missed it. Thank you so much.
Okay, we have a virtual question. Doug Davison?
So, if the owner of the property is in favor or opposed, does that give you feedback? I'm a little worried. I'm all for this in the long run. I don't think that the business district develops more in the direction you're headed, but with COVID and with all of the unknowns, and with just up the street at the, I'm sorry, the Simon's property, whatever that retail space is, with so many of those being empty, and now we're not sure how long it's going to take to fill them with all the same similar kind of businesses you're describing, who would like in this space, I'm a little worried that it's going to be an empty space for a long time. So, I guess, how does the property owner feel? Have we had feedback, and is that a concern?
I heard the end of that question. I'm not sure if there was something in the beginning that I didn't hear, so I apologize if I don't fully answer the question. We did reach out to the property owner, as we are looking to rezone the property, which we can without the property owner's consent, but, you know, wanting to make sure that we were reaching out to the property owner to work with them, just in thinking about what types of reuse. As I mentioned, the uses that this newer property owner has been involved in, in bringing in the restaurant, the convenience grocery store, actually, it's a grocery store, not a convenience, and some of the other athletic, kind of personal instruction-type uses have been good. We haven't had any pushback from the property owner on the limitation. And with that, I also, I hesitate to speak on behalf of the board, other than the general consensus, so if there are any, anyone who would like to hear from the planning board on their reason for voting, we do have the chairman, Barbara LaRue, on the WebEx as
Are there any further questions? I don't see any. In that case, let's go to a vote on this. All those in favor, either virtually raise your hand, or if you're here in person, raise your hand. Oh, no, actually, I shouldn't have done that. I should have, Amy, do we have a poll to go out on this?
I can set a poll, yeah.
I'm sorry, this is a two-thirds. I really need a poll. My mistake. Anyway, those who are here in person, if you'd raise your hands again. You, I can count. All those in person opposed?
And there are 17 non-voting people on the WebEx.
Yes, for those of you on, actually, for all of us, when you see the results of the poll, there will be 17 people who don't vote, because those are the people checked There being 74 in favor and none opposed, this motion passes. Brings us to Article 16, 15. Sorry, I'm just trying to rush. Article 15 is on storage, distribution, warehousing. It's been moved and seconded as printed in the warrant. Planning Board voted 600 in favor of this. Land Use Committee voted 700 in favor of this. Zoning Bylaw Review Committee voted 600 in favor of this. Ms. Kerschner?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, this article came to what it is. It's been on kind of the department's kind of list of things that we need to be thinking about, and when Betsy Hughes and Dave Webb from Precinct 7 came up with the self-storage article, it seemed like the perfect time to really look at that particular section of the bylaw, which encompassed everything that both Betsy and I will be talking about tonight, but for which had really no definitions or any expanded understanding of the use in what we see now as kind of the supply chain, which all of us know more about supply chain than I think we ever knew eight months ago, but for whatever it is we're looking for. But overall, the historical supply chain was you have container ship, factory, you bring the goods, they get distributed to a big giant warehouse, and then they go out to the store for all of us to go buy our retail goods. As Amazon and e-commerce and other retailers have really ramped up online sales and delivery and everything that we're seeing today, we're definitely seeing a change in what that chain looks like. So, what we're seeing is more of, you know, you have the container ship, factory, warehouse, but now we have distribution, fulfillment, delivery, customer pickup, and all of these other things that come along with kind of what we know as how we move goods around. Traditionally, now, today in Burlington, we have one line item that's pretty much wholesale trade and warehousing, which encompasses all of these things. We do not have addition, definition for wholesale trade. We don't have a definition for, you know, any of these things we're talking about. So, and then, actually, Brady, back one slide. Oh, sorry. But anyway, just to bring up that, the art, there's, I'm sure if you've, a lot of you have read the articles that are coming up, there was a Wall Street Journal article that just came out August 9th, really looking at Amazon, looking at these big retailers, and especially the retailers that are, have been filing for bankruptcy and using those spaces as distribution centers. And then we looked at it and saying, okay, what do we want to make sure we don't want, or, you know, what do we want to make sure we want in Burlington? And how do we figure this out, knowing that distribution and fulfillment is a use that's complementary to our retailers, but, you know, when you get into bigger warehousing, bigger distribution, you get more truck traffic, and there's a fine balance that we want to achieve. So, what we have done, we've pulled out a definition for distribution facility, a definition for storage, a definition for warehouse, and a definition for wholesale trade. None of those existed before. And from there, as I mentioned, it was one use table section that covered all of those things. From there, we then added those particular uses to the use table, and essentially what we're allowing is, a big giant warehouse is not something you can really do in Burlington. Wholesale trade remains unchanged. There is areas in the General Industrial District where you can do, you could, you can, you still can do wholesale trade. And then the distribution center, we are allowing a distribution facility, allowing in the General Business District, I mean, I'm sorry, the General Industrial District, the, and the Business Traffic District, but we are, again, not allowing warehouse. And then as you move into accessory uses, which are very important in these categories in terms of the larger stores that we have that are really starting to partake in more of distribution fulfillment, you see the smaller Amazon trucks, you see smaller delivery trucks, and that last mile kind of delivery to customers, the customer pickup, but where are they actually doing that fulfillment of orders? And how are they using that space within the buildings? I will mention accessory use as a definition in our bylaw is up to 25% of the space, so we had a couple of questions at the planning board, well, can accessory use be bigger than a principal use? No, it can't. It's limited by size. So, next slide. Oh, that's my last slide. Okay, go back two slides. Yeah, so again, just taking a look at, we're already seeing some Amazon pickup at Kohl's. Kohl's is starting to do a little bit more of their own inventory. Macy's is, you know, a retailer that generally, overall, is not quite as strong as others. We want to really support, Macy's has a really strong footprint here in Burlington, but, you know, what are their other options? They have a very large store, is part of their store, is it's, and they haven't directly asked us for any of these things, but just wanted to open up, if we had a piece of their store, to allow them to continue to be successful and really do a lot more of the last mile delivery that would help them as a brand continue here. So, with that, that is the gist. I think it's just important for us to, in all of, all of what we're doing in zoning, really identify how the world is changing around us and make sure that there's a way to understand, and then use the definitions and use the use table to really make that work. And I know Andy Ungerson from the Building Inspector is here, and I'm sure he could give you a lot of case studies where there's been a struggle of putting a round, you know, a square peg in a round hole, a lot of the times, when we're really not looking at updating what it is for uses around us. So, thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Kerschner. Zoning Bylaw Review, do you have anything to add? Land Use Committee, Monty Pearson, are you there?
I mean, yes, sir. I am here, and we voted, let's see, 50, no, 700 in favor of this.
Okay, we'll go there. Any further questions from the, or any question, any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dan Hanafin, Precinct 2. Through you to Kristin. I was just wondering if this might affect in any way, or allow, or open up a, an opportunity for, say, like a marijuana wholesaling or distribution facility, that we weren't unanticipated consequences of something like this, in that area where we would, I know we've kind of zoned it in certain areas, would this open it up in an area that we weren't anticipating?
Ms. Kerschner?
So, through the moderator. For any type of marijuana uses, you, this body has approved very distinct marijuana-related distribution, wholesale, recreation, medical, all in a separate category in zoning that does not apply to anything we're talking about here.
Thank you.
Send us a comment in chat, please.
All right, well, Andy, if you can let us know in chat, if you were trying to say something, we could not hear you, let us know, and we'll get back to you, but as for now, we'll move on. Adams, virtual attendee, Adam Sinessi, please.
I didn't have a question.
Neither did I. That's why I called on you.
Virtual attendee, Carol Perna, please.
I didn't have anything. My hand must have been up. I don't know why my hand was up.
Okay.
Well, folks, if you could check to make sure your hand is up, if, only if you're going to have a question. So, we'll keep going down my list here. Another virtual attendee, Miss Mildred Nash. Oops, her name just disappeared. Okay, virtual attendee, Nancy Conti.
Nancy, we hear you.
Oh, good, okay, perfect. Yes, I'm here.
Do you have a question?
I did not have a question. Is my hand up? Sorry.
Okay, could you put your hand down? Thank you.
My hand is down.
Another virtual attendee, Frank Monaco.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Frank Monaco. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I have two questions. First, on the definitions, and I don't really care who takes it. On warehouse, the definition is a facility engaged in long-term storage, distribution, blah, blah, blah. The long-term part, the question I have is, is a warehouse facility allowed to do things like sublet? In other words, somebody use it on a limited basis for storage, even though it's a long-term storage facility? Can smaller players come in and get out for three-month periods?
Ms. Kastner, can you hear that?
Sure, I'm trying to figure out how to answer the question. So, all ware, so warehouse essentially is allowed in the Business Traffic District, which as many of you have been on town meeting long enough probably know, there's three sites in town, two of them are gas stations, one of them is the Midas Muffler on Middlesex Turnpike. So, essentially, we're allowing a warehouse in very small areas of town as a principal use itself. So, what that, it's unlikely unless there's a zoning change, which into BT has been difficult through this body and through the planning board, that we'll see principal use warehouse other than what potentially might exist now. And then certainly for self-storage type uses, we'll get into that in Article 16. In terms of warehousing in term, from an accessory use perspective, there by special permit, so if there's an existing warehousing use and someone wants to sublet, I mean, they already would have had to be under certain special permit conditions, so depending on how a special permit would be written, is it directly to the user or to the site itself, which all special permits run with the land, I guess there's a possibility. I think with the special permit criteria for the planning board for the accessory use would, again, I guess, any new ones moving forward, a lot of the things we talked about was the impacts to the neighbors, what's, you know, what is it that's being stored, what's the truck traffic, as I mentioned before, and really putting limits on those things. So, again, for anything new moving forward, that the prohibition will be accessory only by special permit, anything existing in town now, as many of you know, is a use that may continue as a grandfathered use and then falls under Section, Article 6, Section 6, non-conforming uses. So, I don't know if that directly answered your question, but hopefully gave you background to understand a little bit more about the article.
Mr. Monaco, anything further?
So, but, let me ask it this way, what is the word long-term supposed to imply?
Ms. Kastner?
So, the word long, oh, sorry. The word long-term is, again, to try to recognize that kind of supply chain, what is it and what is it not? If you're in a fulfillment and processing center, it's assumed that it's kind of coming in and going back out again. Long-term warehouse storage is not that. And in speaking with kind of those who interpret the bylaw, it was kind of a, we thought it was a good definition to really set it apart from what was a fulfillment and processing or distribution center, rather than that long-term warehouse kind of use that we've seen in the past.
Mr. Monaco, you all okay?
I find it a little hard to understand. I don't really know how you're going to interpret that if a new condition arises, properties that are already in, fall into that, I guess it is what it is. Going forward, I think it's hard to be sure what would be a warehouse and what wouldn't I'm not sure I know how to fix that, but it just seems unclear to me. it just seems unclear to me, but let me ask my other question, I'll just leave you with that, um, for the planning board, the other question I have is with regard to, um, the use table, the, the storage, um, the, the last piece, the last two pieces, distribution facility incidental to permitted principal use, and storage incidental to permitted principal use, those all are allowed, um, for example, in, in all of the overlays, and what are we trying to achieve by allowing that, for example, in the, in the town center?
Ms. Kastner?
Sure, so I would look at storage, um, in terms of, you know, almost every use that we have, that's a retail use, has storage, we haven't really set it apart, it's just kind of assumed that if you have a retail building, if you have a supermarket, you're going to have areas that are storage, um, we have a separate parking table, we have a separate, um, kind of, in terms of doing a zoning analysis and what the impacts and the needs of your site are, the amount of storage does make a difference, um, we have not really separated it out as an accessory use ever before, and therefore, what has happened is we get these uses that, you know, this is our principal use, and then, oh, yeah, yeah, we have the storage, well, you know, it, but in order here to understand, just, you know, if you're a grocery store and you have storage of stuff in the back before you put it out, that's, I mean, it's, it's fine, if you're a retail store, the same, you have, you know, you have storage in the back, so by taking out those kind of warehousing, wholesale trade, distribution, um, we wanted to take out the things that we really may have some concern that need special permit oversight by the planning board and permitting, but take out that storage of goods incidental to the principal use, um, that are being sold at retail, so that's the reason why you're seeing storage in the last category as a yes across the board, um, uh, and, uh, so, and then having more of a special permit criteria on the other, the warehousing piece and the distribution piece, which require more oversight, and in the, and just, I was debating whether I was going to go into it, but in the town center overlay, if you remember, it needs to have a subscript one if it's going to overwrite the underlying zoning district. Doesn't mean that in the RO districts, you could have these things, it would need to be a subscript, subscript to override, so I hope that answered the question.
Mr. Monaco, follow-up?
Yeah, well, I'm just, I don't know enough about this, I guess, it's pretty technical, are there any size limitations, so let's take, um, storage incidental to the permitted use, and that's allowed in quite a few places, are there any size limitations on how much storage that retailer can have?
Ms. Kastner?
So as I mentioned previously, an accessory use can be up to 25% of the square footage, but not more.
Ms., Mr. Monaco, hold on, Frank, you're not, okay, you're turned on.
I, I find this a little difficult to understand, but I didn't sit in on any of the, the planning board meetings, so I guess I would have gotten more education there, um, I, I support it, I think we're going in, in the right direction, sure, um, I just wonder if this is still really clear enough for enforcement and application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Virtual attendee, PAO859, whoever you are, you'll have to identify yourself.
Yeah, sorry, it's Patricia O'Brien, um, so would Kohl's and Macy's as examples, if they discovered in a year or two that they needed 30% or 40% of their, um, square footage as an accessory use, what, what would their process be?
Ms. Kastner?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, um, if they, well, if they wanted 30 to 40%, they can't have it, it's in a, they're accessory, allowed accessory uses by special permit through the planning board that need to be, uh, 25%, I mean, through what we're allowing in zoning, if you wanted to change, well, I don't know, 25% of a use, I think, I have a question as to even if it's possible to go to the Board of Appeals, but that's for a different question, but in terms of what we're putting in front of you right now, the accessory use at Kohl's or Macy's would need a special permit by the planning board to do other than what they're doing retail, if they wanted to consider, um, some sort of distribution portion of their business.
Ms. O'Brien, follow-up?
No, thank you.
Okay. Any further questions, comments in the, in the hall? And I see no more hands up, so let's move on to a vote on this. Amy, do we have a poll? Okay, virtual poll gone, went out, and for those in attendance here, please, all those in favor, raise your hand. Thank you, all those opposed? Thank you. As the vote is 88 in favor to opposed, uh, this motion passes, let's move on to Article 16. Article 16 has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee, and it is as printed in the warrant, on self-storage facilities, planning board voted six zero zero in favor, land use committee voted seven zero zero in favor, Ms. Hughes, I believe you have something from the land use committee?
Um, I'm, actually, I'm a proponent, so, um, uh, first, thank you, Mr. Moderator, my name is Betsy Hughes, I am a town meeting member from Precinct Seven, Article 16 is proposed by Dave Webb and myself for your consideration and support, it is our feeling that this article will be of great benefit to the town of Burlington as we continue to evolve, the article itself consists of two parts, the first is a definition of self-storage, which has been developed using both the town planners dictionary, as well as examples from other towns, the second part is an additional line item in the retail, consumer, and trade use table, where, as you can see, self-storage facilities would not be allowed, this approach has been approved by town council, and the proposed article has support of the planning board, land use committee, and zoning bylaw review committee, before we discuss the details of what we're proposing, a little background might be helpful to set the stage as to why we're here, according to Biz Now, the self, and the Self-Storage Association, for income-producing real estate, self-storage is one of the easiest, least expensive, and highest yielding types of property, with high returns, low maintenance costs, employing only one onsite manager, the land that is used is usually not desirable for other developments such as office buildings or apartments, building costs are low, as there's little plumbing, concrete floors, no windows, no trim, et cetera, almost completely free from maintenance, tenants move into the units with no involvement or oversight on the part of onsite manager, once the contract is signed, and move out with no effort on the part of the owner, and if they don't pay, well, things are simply auctioned off, and the unit is rented to another tenant, according to an April 2019 Wall Street Journal article entitled, "Towns to Self-Storage Facilities, Please Go Someplace Else," towns across the country are feeling overstuffed with self-storage facilities and are getting, are putting the brakes on further development, we saw this locally in Woburn, where they elected to ban further development in these businesses due to concerns about devaluing neighboring properties, low tax revenue, and the lack of job creation, even closer to home, jumbo self-storage purchased property on Blanchard Road, near residences, premier office space, and abutting wetlands, many of those in that area thought that was an undevelopable lot, they went before the Planning Board and Conservation Commission for approval to build a five-story, thousand-unit storage facility visible from 128, given the size of the property, they could only have 13 parking spaces that will be allowed, this is going to be a very large, single-use building, the developer's intent is to flip the building once completed, so there is no evidence of their commitment to our community, if one were to look within five miles of Burlington, one would find that there are over 11 storage facilities, including three in Burlington with the addition of jumbo, um, so for those who need self-storage, there are plenty of options, in visiting a number of these facilities, I found that none of them were fully occupied, in talking to onsite managers, I heard a number of common stories, they always have space to rent, there's always a deal to be had, they often have retail spaces so you can buy packing materials, there's 24-hour access through a gate, which you get into by a keypad, and the door entry is by keypad as well, so no human intervention, they have signs saying no hazardous materials and monitor the site by cameras, but no one's there to check to see what's going on in those units, and to that point, in talking to managers, they've had problems with people doing things like actually living in the units, or storing their pets there, you may have seen the news story about the storage facility in Quincy, where the FBI and the Boston Fire Department had to go in, in hazmat suits, in order to deal with one of the unit's issues, from a community perspective, self-storage facilities tend to be unattractive, cannot be reused for other purposes should they fail, and they devalue the neighboring sites, the town of Burlington has gone to great lengths to attract biotech companies, corporate headquarters, and the development of premier office space, why would we continue to allow land to be used by a business that detracts from those efforts, as there was no provision in the Burlington bylaws to preclude jumbo self-storage development, despite the united voice of Precinct Seven homeowners, businesses imploring conservation and the planning boards to say no, the planning board had no basis to do so, and it was approved, as Woburn has now banned further develop, development of self-storage facilities, and there's none in license in Bedford, Burlington becomes even more attractive for additional development should we allow it, given all of this, Dave Webb and I, as representatives from Precinct Seven, propose these bylaw amendments to prohibit further expansion in our town of this sort of unfavorable development, I thank you for your attention and would be happy to answer any questions, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. Okay, questions from the body on this? Seeing none, see no virtual hands up, we'll put this to a vote. Amy, do we have a poll? All right, polls going out, for those in attendance, um, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, all those opposed? Thank you. There'd be an 82 in favor, five against, the motion passes, thank you, Ms. Hughes, let's move on to Article 17. Article 17 is, is as printed in the, the warrant, it has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee. Planning board supported this, six zero zero, land use committee voted seven zero zero in favor, zoning bylaw review committee voted eight zero zero in favor. Ms. Kastner?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, um, this amendment is actually fairly simple, but before I even begin, I want to give a huge, huge shout-out to, um, Amy Warfield and all everyone involved to get us up to speed, get us on electronic permitting, for this body to fund the initial kickoff, to really get a huge electronic permitting umbrella over multiple departments, um, had we not had that this spring, we would not have been nearly as successful and open as we were, so I, I want to, I have to say it because it was really, it, it was really the key thing that made it possible for us to continue working and working together and collaboratively, um, over the springtime, um, with that said, this article actually is fairly straightforward, uh, in our bylaws right now, we had a lengthy description of the permitting process, um, for special permits and site plans, which in every other rules and reg is in our, um, planning board rules and regs, so what we have actually done is just take out that lengthy permitting process of how many paper copies and where you need to send them, and, um, you know, we have the things we need to have in there for, you know, statutory reasons, but everything else and process-wise have moved to our rules and regs, and what that has done is because it's out of the zoning bylaw and then further in our rules and regs described, and allows now for electronic permitting, we were having some hiccups between, um, needing to get a lot of paper copies hiccups between needing to get a lot of paper copies and having all of the same information electronically in the Viewpoint software. So in order to kind of streamline the amount of paper we have, we needed to make this amendment and make the amendment to the zoning bylaw itself to allow us to come up to, again, the new day of technology. And again, had we not been here, I don't know what we would have done. So I thank this body for all previous votes and hope you support this. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kastner. Questions, discussion, excuse me, from the body? Mr. Martin, could you check -- could you check your volume, please?
It was annoying. Yeah, and your video was annoying.
Hang on. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I need to speak a little louder. So I don't have a problem with these -- adding these two sections. What I have a problem with is the length of time that is required by the town to respond. Viewpoint sets up checkpoint procedures so that an applicant has to go through several different things, if I understand it correctly, and each department has to give their okay. And if those departments sit on that application for three or four or five days, then nothing happens. So is there anything in this bylaw that's going to specify that the reviewing department has a certain number of time or limit of answering and replying and saying, yes, we agree, or we don't agree, or everything's okay, or the applicant has provided everything that they need and all the other stuff? Thank you, Mr. Martin. Ms. Kastner?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So the -- if you see in the warrant, there's thirty-five that we -- when we have applications, we send them out to Conservation Engineering, Board of Health, Building, and the Town Administrator, and Fire and Police. And they have thirty-five days to respond. And so let me back up. So our deadline for applications is about four to five weeks before a hearing. They have thirty-five days to respond under the bylaw. That is unchanged from previous, unchanged here. The process in Viewpoint, yes, now it comes in. It goes out to all departments via a link to the file in Viewpoint, so we can all look at the same thing instead of having these giant packets among all these departments or distribution. If people still want paper copies, we do have a process to get paper copies to them as well as to the abutters. So in terms of timeline, the Planning Board gives departments thirty-five days. After that timeline, they, you know, want to get comments from departments. We all want to work together and try to get as much feedback from everyone as possible. But again, that thirty-five-day mark is in the bylaw and unchanged. In terms of the process for, you know, Viewpoint and how it's set up and who goes first, second, third, as users come on to Viewpoint, it's, you know, those of us building, conservation, planning, and we've been doing very well. As different departments, such as Fire, Police, and others get on to Viewpoint, they're getting better with Viewpoint. I don't think that the permitting software itself is really the big lag with issues in timing. We do meet, as all of these commenting departments, once a week, virtually now, it used to meet, but virtually, we meet once a week to go over all applications. So if there is that kind of lag, that usually gets resolved within those meetings and someone tries to help move that forward. So I'm not sure if the question was directly to the thirty-five days or just experience through going through the process of Viewpoint. I will say, having everyone have the exact same information in front of them and seeing everyone's comments on that exact same information through the software has been very helpful to get everyone on the same page. And for us, you know, in the olden days, you used to have applicants say, oh, those boards are great, they, you know, I went to their meeting and they said they were fine. Well, are they really fine? But now we're all together talking about it, so that doesn't really happen anymore. So I hope that answers the question.
Mr. Martin, follow-up? So who gets to apply for a permit or a user ID to log into the Burlington system, Viewpoint system? Ms. Kastner?
So anyone can actually log in and view the Viewpoint system. I'm not the tech behind Viewpoint, if someone else wants to answer that question a little bit more, but I know Viewpoint is accessible through the public.
Mr. Martin, follow-up? A follow-up question. So if the departments do not respond within the thirty-five days, what happens to the permit? Is it automatically approved? Ms. Kastner?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The thirty-five days is a process and policy that's developed internal to Burlington. It's not a statutory requirement, at least for special permits and site plans. There are other statutory timelines and other things that do play in terms of when things are statutorily approved. But if departments do not respond within thirty-five days, nothing is statutorily approved. The Planning Board just then may act without a comment from those departments. But again, I, you know, I think we have done a very good job among departments and department heads to try to make sure that we're all communicating.
Thank you, Ms. Kastner. Mr. Martin, anything further? Question, is there going to be a specific contact in each department that is responsible for the monitoring of the Viewpoint software and all the applications? Ms. Kastner?
I will say unofficially, yes. Some departments have been made it a little bit more official than others, but for the most of us who are, you know, as I mentioned a couple of years ago, we approved the funding, we're all getting up to speed. Thankfully, we were here, actually, last October, we went live with Viewpoint, and that was only a year ago. So for all of us are kind of the -- working to make sure that all the information is up there. We have two, two-and-a-half people in our office to make sure that that happens and make sure that all information is distributed among the whole group.
Thank you, Ms. Kastner. Mr. Martin, how we -- anything further?
Further.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Virtual attendee.
You have a comment or question for us?
I beg your pardon, I pressed lower hand, and I guess it -- no questions?
Thank you. I see no more virtual hands. Are there any actual hands in the audience? Seeing none, we'll split this to a vote. Amy will send a poll out, and for those of us in attendance, all those in favor, please Thank you. The vote being unanimous, this article passes. Brings us to Article eighteen. Okay, this is a little different from what's been printed in the warrant, so I will have to read this. If you're looking at your warrant, the paragraph, the first paragraph under "Short-Term Rental" has been changed, the rest is as printed in the warrant. So it has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee. This article be moved as follows. Two-point-one-nine, excuse me, two-point-nineteen, point-one, point-zero, point-two, "Short-Term Rental." "The use of a residential unit for residential occupancy by a person or persons for a period of fewer than twenty-eight consecutive calendar days for a fee. A short-term rental may or may not be facilitated through a booking agent. A short-term rental is a property that is not a hotel, motel, lodging house, or bed-and-breakfast establishment where at least one room or unit is rented. A short-term rental includes, but is not limited to, an apartment, house, cottage, condominium, or other accommodations." And I believe up on the screen you should have a red-line copy that shows you the difference between what was submitted in the printed warrant and what we have in front of us. Planning Board supported this 7-0-0. Land Use Committee vote was 7-0-0 in favor. Zoning Bylaw Review Committee voted 7-1-0 in favor. Ms. Kastner, take her away.
If we could go back to the first slide, that would be helpful. I want to first thank Planning Board members Bill Gaffney and Mike Aspeo. They were kind of a team in taking a look at this in the many, many, many months ago in terms of pros and cons. This was even before the state of Massachusetts and the city of Boston were proactive in getting short-term -- short-term rental kind of defined and in the statutes at a state level. So next slide is, I will say, the Planning Board as well as Zoning Bylaw Review. Zoning Bylaw Review amended the section five months ago. The Planning Board had -- what was actually here was what we've been talking about. I made a mistake in giving Betty the older version, so that was -- that was on me, but that's the reason for the edit. Next slide. So what this is, short-term rentals, we are defining what a short-term rental is. We do not define short-term rentals at all. We are defining as -- I don't need to read it again, Mr. Moderator just read it. And we are defining them, and we are adding them to the use table. And then we are prohibiting them as a principal use as well as an accessory use. This was not the direction we necessarily were going in when we started this conversation. What we knew we needed to do was define short-term rentals so then we could properly regulate it. There was some talk about certain places we would allow it and not allow it, and then even coming up with some general bylaw provisions to accompany those that may be allowed to continue. What has happened over the last couple months has really exacerbated concern over short-term rentals, both in Burlington as well as across the country. We're seeing a lot of short-term rentals being used, not for the family going to the lake and having it for a week. It's -- we've seen a lot of short-term rentals, especially in Burlington, kind of weekend partying, way too many people. The state of emergency has pushed people to do interesting things. And we, I know many of you probably have heard, whether the paper or Facebook or other outlets, some issues we've had here in Burlington. We did have extensive conversations with the Police Department about some concerns among short-term rentals. Overall, short-term rentals is pretty much renting out your house for, you know, for a short term, for one or two or three days or, you know, a week, which the state has recognized as a commercial use and recognized that, you know, to look at residential neighborhoods, you want to preserve the residential neighborhoods for residential uses, not for kind of this renting of a -- renting out continually of using the dwelling for that. So this, as well as the current issues over the last couple of months, have pushed us to a total prohibition. This doesn't mean we can't revisit this in the future. We should still probably discuss general bylaw amendments if we do want to consider short-term rentals in the past and in the future. I will -- there's a lot of confusion with this, that we're adding, doing a zoning amendment to add short-term rentals to the zoning bylaw, which is true. We are adding them to the zoning bylaw, but then with that, we're adding them so then we can prohibit them across the board. So we had a lot of people saying, vote no on short-term rentals. No, no, if you don't want short-term rentals, vote yes on short-term rentals. A no will keep things at status quo, and short-term rentals will continue to be kind of undefined and largely unregulated, and a lot more difficult to enforce the existing rules that are kind of in a gray area. So I will conclude my presentation with that. We did have a huge amount of residents from especially certain areas that this has been an issue come to our Planning Board meetings, and for the most part, I would say eighty percent concerned about continuation of short-term rentals in Burlington. There were also some questions about why only twenty-eight days, and if there are some more specific questions, I would encourage to format those to Town Council, Lisa Mead. But there is statutory issues with more than thirty days, that we had some questions coming out, do short-term rentals for six months. But all of us who own homes, we can rent month-to-month, and zoning can't handle -- zoning does not get into rental ownership issues, whether you own or rent, with the exception of short-term rentals as separately defined as a different type of use than a residential house. So I think we've had a real -- a lot of really good discussions. As I said initially, it wasn't outright, but there have been some recent issues that have caused us to move in that direction. I will say that I think we should keep an eye on this, and I think it's, you know, in a lot of ways, short-term rentals can be useful to a community, but, you know, you balance it with what's happening with them. And right now, if I think we're just taking that step, if things change, we'll be back here to potentially change that. But right now, an outright prohibition. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kastner. Questions, comments from the body? You don't have to run, Myrna, we'll wait for you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Myrna Saltman, Precinct Two. Oh, I forgot what my question was. Excuse me. Shame on me. Oh, dear, 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 dear. Oh, what was the vote of the Planning Board, of the Laniaus, or ZBA, or whatever else we have?
Didn't I give those? Planning Board was 7-0-0. Land Use Committee, 7-0-0. Zoning Bylaw Review Committee, 7-1-0.
Thank you very much.
I see a couple of virtual hands up. Mr. Monaco. Frank Monaco?
Mr. Moderator, Frank Monaco, two questions. First, I interpret this to say that something that's rented for more than twenty-eight days is not a short-term rental. a short-term rental, and we have other mechanisms to deal with those kinds of rentals, and we're not affecting that. Is that correct?
Ms. Kastner?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, and just for our, what bylaw would govern a six-month rental of a home?
Ms. Kastner?
As I previously mentioned, under zoning, we do not, other than just these short-term rentals, we cannot regulate form of ownership. So a six-month rental would be under state statutory tenant landlord-type regulations, which, as I mentioned, if you want to go further, council could certainly elaborate on that if you desired.
Mr. Monaco, follow-up?
One more question, Mr. Moderator?
Go ahead.
My last question, just for my edification. So at the very end of the tables, the accessory use regulation, short-term rental, everything is no doubt except the two overlay districts. And I'm assuming that WR is the Water Resources, and what is A?
Ms. Kastner?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's the Aquifer, the Aquifer and Water Resource Districts, those districts and overlays. If a use presents additional issues, such as fuel storage and some other types of uses that maybe need additional regulation in those districts, we would do that. We didn't feel that a short-term rental was of the, was harmful necessary to the Aquifer water resource. So therefore, that's why you see that listing in, for those uses. But it does not mean you can have those uses in those districts.
Mr. Monaco, any furthering further?
Well, it must mean that you can have them. It's a yes for short-term rental in the Water Resources District.
Ms. Kastner, is it the underlying zoning that?
Thank you. So the underlying, so the way the Water Resource and Aquifer District overlay is constructed in Article 8.3, I think, is that it needs to be allowed in the underlying zoning district, as I mentioned, for certain things that may have more impact in those districts or sensible, sensitive to the water supply, then you may see a yes in the underlying district, but a special permit in those overlays, which then would need, would require you to get that additional special permit in those districts. But if it's not allowed in the underlying zoning district, it's not allowed in the overlays.
Mr. Monaco?
Thank you.
Virtual attendee, Mr. Dave Van Camp?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Dave Van Camp, Precinct 7. So I've got a question. I'm sensitive to the fact that we've had some problems here in Burlington with some short-term rentals and some crazy parties and so forth, and some of my constituents. And I've had to involve the police and crazy parties in my own neighborhood, and it wasn't at all related to short-term rentals. It seems to me that the problems we've had are a law enforcement issue. So I'm a little nervous about overall prohibitions, just philosophically, and I don't like to pull that trigger too quickly. Can we get a little more information about what the discussion was, particularly with regard to the police department? It sounded like they had some reservations. I may have missed something. Can we get a little more information on that?
Do you have that information?
I cannot speak for the police department, but I can tell you kind of the nature of the discussion that we have had, and it was, it's funny, I'm speaking to the body, but then also to a screen, so it's, but the nature of the discussion is, you know, there have been these issues, that yes, there have been issues at people who just have houses and have parties. But there have been also specifically issues with short-term rental houses where there is, someone's renting a house, there's no oversight, there's no one in that house, the owner, you know, owner's not in the house. So therefore, the kind of direction that we were trending was, you know, we're having issues with large gatherings in Burlington. Some of them are in these short-term rentals that we have around town, which, you know, are largely, as I mentioned before, undefined and unregulated, so it's hard to, it's been hard for the building department to enforce, it's been hard for the police department to try to, you know, get their hands around this in general for just these large gatherings. So I agree with you, it is a police enforcement issue, it's also a building enforcement issue, but I guess in talking about this, it's how can we make this issue easier to, one, enforce? And if we don't have a definition, we don't have a line item in the use table, it's hard, as I said, in this kind of gray area, to directly enforce you are doing a use that is prohibited, and at least try to get at some of those issues that have been happening over the summer with some larger parties. And as I said before, I agree, total prohibition is not a direction that I would necessarily move into, and that's why I want to keep our minds open, at least, to continue to explore short-term rentals as something that may be beneficial. Right now, it's demonstrated that it's been an issue more than a benefit, and that's why you see what you have here in front of you.
Mr. Webb, excuse me, Mr. Van Camp, anything further?
No, that answers a lot of my questions, but I would agree that I think we need to keep an eye on this, and we may need to address other bylaws to control use and give the police the powers they need to help our citizens and prevent some of this order we've seen in the past. So thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, appreciate it.
Mr. Van Camp? Barbara Leroux, virtual attendee, please.
Hi, I just wanted to address Mr. Van Camp's question just a little bit more. It is true that the bulk of the people that came to our meeting were expressing concerns about large parties that occurred, especially during COVID, but there were also some other concerns as well. Even without the party concern, there were a number of residents that came forward and said they felt uncomfortable if there was a home in their neighborhood that was not owner-occupied, that had frequent changeovers. So there's a different person in there every week, or a different group of people in there every week, they felt uncomfortable because they don't know who's staying there, it felt unsafe for their neighborhood, and not really the kind of residential neighborhood that we all in Burlington have come to love. So while the parties were sort of a more recent concern, they weren't the only concern. I just thought you should know that.
Thank you, Ms. Leroux.
Excuse me. Frank Monaco, virtual attendee, have question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for taking me a second time. What occurs to me, I want to know if we had ever considered making this by special permit rather than by just wiping it out? Because it seems to me, I'm sure there were plenty of problems with this, people abuse something like this readily, but it seems like there may very well be some legitimate situations where we're penalizing a resident from doing a short-term rental for a good cause. So what if you made it a special permit?
Ms. Kastner?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As I mentioned, we did start there. We started as, taking a look at different ways in which we can approach short-term rentals, get at the issues in neighborhoods that, you know, we'd get comments that, oh, my neighbor, they have someone coming and going, and there's eight cars in their neighborhood, and they're parking all over the lawn, and, you know, just some other things that are not typical, not necessarily typical for your residential neighborhoods. And, you know, of course, then say, well, they have four teenagers, so of course everyone has a car. But still, that's not necessarily typical, as well as some of the activity we were seeing with short-term rentals. So as I keep saying, and again, to do a total prohibition, I think it is, it's a strong step. It just, based on, I mean, I think we had 85 people on our planning board meeting in July when we were talking about this, of residents and neighbors very concerned about short-term rentals. We did have a few people with the view of that they own property, they want to have their rights, and they want to be able to rent their property. This, as mentioned before, this does not preclude you from renting a residential house month-to-month. Anyway, so that's kind of how we got to this prohibition. And to the point that was just made about further regulation through the police department and through general bylaws, I do think that's a conversation that should continue. Under zoning, as I mentioned, that there's a piece we can do here in zoning, and there's pieces that can be looked at in other areas of the bylaws in the town. And I think that's something, as we continue to think about this moving forward, we think about those as well. So, but this is the zoning piece, the use piece, and anyway, we, the Planning Board felt it was important to take a, kind of a deeper step with the total prohibition and then back up as, and hopefully have continuation of discussion for now.
Thank you, Ms. Kastner, excuse me. Follow-up on that?
Run away, okay.
No, I don't. Mr. Pearson, do you have?
I'd like to add. I would like to tell the body that we need to think about the special permit process in a different way than what the name sounds like. Because it sounds like if you get a special, if you label something a special permit, that people need to provide a special reason why they should get the waiver to go ahead and do something with their property or to do some kind of activity. And in fact, the way it works out is that because someone else has already got, because one person has gotten a special permit to do something, after that, what happens is that there is a presumption that the planning board must come up with a reason why it cannot give you a special permit. And this sounds perverse, but that's the way it works in the world of zoning. And so if you create a special permit for these kinds of rentals, what you will be doing is that the planning board would have to be coming up with reasons each time why it cannot give that special permit to those people. And I know that doesn't make sense in terms of just ideas about what it means to have a special permit, but it's not really special anymore. It's really, the burden of proof is on the neighborhood and the planning board to prevent that person from going ahead and getting a special permit. And I've seen this many times when, in hearings with the planning board, that the planning board has to come up with some kind of a reason why this is a bad idea, and unless they can come up with some really, you know, smoking gun, they go ahead and have to give you the permit. So making something a special permit right would open the door up to many other, many other people coming and getting permission to do that. It's the same situation as it was with the solar panels earlier, the rotating solar panels on your front lawn. Once you make it a special permit kind of thing, then the planning board is on the defensive and has to be able to prove that it, that it can't give you the special permit. So it's a Pandora's box to make something a special permit situation. It's not, it's not a restriction, it's a, it's a door that's easy to open up.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
Virtual attendee, John Eiler?
Yeah, I want to just touch on something that Frank Monaco mentioned. The way that the overlay districts are done, I think, can lead to a lot of confusion. So in particular, in general, noes override yeses, but if there's a, if there's a yes with a one, then the yes overrides a no, and if there's an SP with a one, it overrides a no. So if you, you know, if you read every single word into bylaws, it does eventually become clear. But what, and elsewhere, I've seen places where explicitly states whether noes override yeses or noes override, or yeses override noes, and it's not entirely consistent. So as far as this goes, I think if you put all the words together in all the sections, and both Section 4, Section 8, and this, yes, I agree, it does hang together. But I guess what I would suggest is that when the zoning bylaw committee eventually gets spare time, which I know they never have, I think an excellent thing would be to come up with a little more consistent terminology, so it's clear that yeses override noes all the time, or the other way around, rather than sometimes it's one way, sometimes another. So, at any rate, just a suggestion on that, please, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Virtual attendee, Lucy Damiani, you have a question for us?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, I do have a question. Just for point of clarification, where does, where do Airbnbs fall in this conversation? Are they considered a bread-and-breakfast establishment? Or are those the short-term rentals that we are thinking, trying to get rid of? Or neither?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Airbnb, HomeAway, you know, if you choose one, those are all considered the short-term rental that we're discussing here tonight.
Thank you. Follow-up, Mrs. Damiani?
Thank you.
Virtual attendee, Sally Willard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Sally Willard, Precinct 4. In the Land Use, sorry, Zoning Bylaw Review Committee meetings, we had quite a few discussions about this, and one of the reasons for going this route is because we don't have a set of regulations set in our general bylaw or anywhere else for such things as licensing. So Airbnb requires every Airbnb host to certify, whether by paper is uncertain, but they are required to certify that they have a license from their town or city. We don't have any mechanism for licensing anyone, and so any Airbnb that has certified to Airbnb that they've been licensed is not licensed. And the alternative to zoning and essentially prohibiting the short-term rental is to create a system for licensing and regulating the short-term rentals, which means that there's going to be considerable expense. We have to develop such a system from the ground up. Maybe we could borrow something that other cities and towns have done, but it means really starting from the ground up and deciding, you know, who's going to approve it, who's going to manage the applications and the paperwork and so on. So this is a much better alternative, at least for the time being, my opinion. Sally Willard, Precinct 4. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willard.
Virtual attendee, Jonathan Sacks, you have a comment?
Hi, John Sacks, Precinct 7. Yeah, I was just looking online, and there's quite a few cities that do require licensing. And I guess the idea would be if you, if you rent out your place via Airbnb and there's trouble, you would lose your license. So that seems like a less strict way to go, but as Sally points out, we would have to create a licensing system, and I don't, I would hope that the license fees would pay for the administration of it, otherwise the town is subsidizing people who are renting out to Airbnb. But it seems like something we should at least look at, see if towns of a similar size to ours have created a licensing system that's workable. But it seems like in the short term, with that not available, we should pass this, but I think going forward, just to be fair to people, maybe we should... maybe we should look at whether comparable towns have created a successful licensing method.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks.
Virtual attendee, Mildred Nash.
Do you have a question for us?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mildred Nash, Precinct 3. I would just like to commend the Planning Board, the Zoning Bylaw Committee, and the Land Use Committee. I think that having these three entities functioning as well as they are, particularly during the pandemic, gives us an ever-better, more fully-rounded perspective on zoning issues, which I think helped us to have either no discussion at all or a very educated discussion. So congratulations to all that have made this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nash. Are there anybody else who has a question other than to move the question? There are no other questions coming? Okay, in that case. My apologies for my presumption.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jeff DeBono, Precinct 3. I wanted to find out what we have for enforcement on it. How do the sites like Airbnb, HomeAway, how does it work? If we pass this, do we submit something to them and they automatically will not rent something? Or is that up to the host? How does that work? Will they block it automatically?
Ms. Kastner?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. By passing this, we're defining the use and regulating it as a use in the use table. What this gives us is when, as I keep mentioning, there's a little bit of a gray area. We do have a very old provision for kind of renting of rooms, like boardings. But anyway, what this does is it defines specifically what the short-term rental is, and it allows for the Building Department, if they find there are short-term... There are people operating a short-term rental, they can enforce saying this is a prohibited use in your neighborhood, in your zoning district, and, you know, through their channels, issue cease and desist, and then go as far as they need to go to make sure that that use does cease. It's not just... A short-term rental is defined if it's never been allowed. I mean, there are certain ways and categories that could be considered and then permitted. So of those short-term rentals that have existed so far, I mean, they can try to claim their pre-existing non-conforming uses that should be allowed. But I think for a large part in the community, they weren't allowed, they're not allowed, and more clearly now, they're not allowed. So zoning is enforced through the Building Department. As mentioned, the Board of Health and Police have different enforcements through different areas of the bylaw. If, as mentioned by Town Meeting Member Willard, as well as Town Meeting Member Sacks, that, you know, when we get into potential general bylaw about licensing, taxation, and other issues, we certainly can explore more down of that route. Right now, under zoning, this was the first step of just defining, regulating, and understanding what this use is so we can know what it is when it's happening and enforce with the Building Department that particular use. But again, this is a step in a series of steps as we want to take to figure out what this is and how we want to regulate it in town, have it, not have it. Right now, this step to total prohibition is just to kind of figure it out as we move forward.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kastner. Anything further from somebody? Mr. Bell? No, don't say that. Don't say that, because then we have to take a vote. You're the last... If you don't... If you take that back, we will vote. Thank you. Okay, let's move on and vote on this question. Poll will be going out. All those in attendance, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. There being 79 in favor, 12 opposed, this has a clear 2/3s majority, and it passes. Thank you. Mr. Hanifin? Jeez, I've been waiting for that. Hold on a minute. I've recognized Mr. Hanifin.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Just a real quick comment, and then I'll be with you in that vote. I just applaud the process that went through with this town meeting. Obviously, it's a very difficult situation to bring us all here and have everybody online as well. But I'd like to really stress that I think it's very important to have us all come together here in this room, as a town, as a community, as this body, to do our business here. So I'd encourage us to, as soon as possible, move forward from this process to our usual process. I just hope... Hopefully, we can do that sooner rather than later, God willing so.
Thank you, Mr. Hanifin. I'll second that. But before I accept the motion to adjourn, I'd just like to make sure people appreciate the number of folks that have been working to put all this together. John Porter, John Middleton, and Joe Bongiorno, dealing with the sound and everything. We've got four people at BCAT dealing, helping us out. We've got another three people off-site watching Facebook and looking, checking chat. We've got three people from IT who are helping us. And we've got Brady over here, and we've got Amy. And I'm probably missing a few people, but my thanks to all of you for making this successful. Thank you. So now, did I hear a motion? Not debatable, all those in favor? Opposed? We're good. Thank you very much.